Good evening. It is six thirty on Monday, August 28, 2023. And the Witten Woods City School Board and Education meeting is called to order. Please turn your cell phone to silent and then rise.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Seymour, would you please call the board? President?
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Here. Mr. Burden?
Present.
There is no news score at 2.01 in the minute. Welcome back, Mr. Seymour. Thank you. 3.01, District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts and Introductions.
Yes, Madam Vice President, before we go into that, you see so many administrators in the audience today. The reason they're here, they've been begging me to come to a board meeting, and so we finally have said, "You can come." So they're excited. So thank you for all the administrators that came out tonight. And you will not have to stay for the entire meeting. So during the break, you can go back to your responsibilities, because I know some of you report as early as 6:00 AM. Thank you.
That late? Wow.
All right, the first. The Board of Education thanks Mr. Matthew Kessler, manager of Green Hills Members Center for Wright-Patt, at the Wright-Patt Credit Union generous donation of 82 backpacks, school supplies, tissues, Clorox wipes, et cetera, the value of $2,700. So, yes, sir. So I'd like for you to say a few words, if you don't mind.
There's the mic over there.
Yeah, they're going to want you to go to the microphone. Yep.
You can go over there with them. She's going to take a picture.
Oh, you're not coming to the microphone? Nice. Hello, everyone. So I'm Matt Kessler. I'm the manager of the Green Hills location, Wright-Patt Credit Union. This is Rochelle. She manages our South District. So Wright-Patt wanted to do something for the community, obviously, and we chose to do the backpacks and the school supplies and do something for the kids in the community. We were looking for a way to, obviously, disperse those, and then I met Drew, who's helping me with that, who's currently taking my picture. But no, Wright-Patt, you know, we do enjoy being part of the community. Green Hills has been around for quite a long time. So it's obviously our pleasure. Even though I don't live in the area, I get to come to this school fairly often, because my daughter plays AAU and practices out of this school. So it's kind of cool to be part of the community in terms of work and also be around the community and around the schools with my daughter. Get to know a lot of the other kids, also the girls my daughter plays with. So obviously, it's a pleasure to get back to the community. You guys have a great district, obviously a beautiful school. So it's our pleasure to be part of it. So that's what we wanted to do. So, okay? So thank you so much for the award and recognition.
Could you bring anyone else with you tonight?
Just us.
Okay, all right. See, we don't want to miss that photo opportunity. All right, the next honors, recognitions and gifts goes to the Divine Nine, and I am going to allow Vice President Bryant to kind of give an overview. And just to let you know, my truck is parked out front, and it is full of school supplies, absolutely to the brim. So after the meeting or sometime tomorrow, Dr. Martin and Dr. Ragland and I will organize where these supplies go, and these folks have been extremely generous. So, Doc.
Thank you. I'm not sure, is anyone here from the National Pan-Hellenic Council? Have they arrived yet?
If you would like for me to be them, I can be them.
You can be them. Well, so just for our audience, the Board of Education would like to thank Cincinnati's National Pan-Hellenic Council, or the NPHC. It is a group of nine historically Black fraternities and sororities, in which we have myself, as well as Dr. Johnson, as well as Superintendent Smith, who are members of. So the NHPC decided they were going to have their annual picnic this year in the Forest Park area, and they decided to collect school supplies. And someone from City Council in Forest Park reached out and asked if we would like them, and of course, yes. So when I thought school supplies, I thought it would be a couple of things. Literally Superintendent's trunk is filled and his backseat with school supplies. So when I tell you that they showed up and showed out, they did. So I'd like to recognize these organizations. Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Alpha Kappa, Kappa, AKA Sorority Incorporated.
Did you miss the mine?
I know. Right, I'm sorry. Yes, we've got, AKA, is there? Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. Don't kill me. Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity. Theta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Incorporated. Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporation. So thank you again for your donation of school supplies to the Witten Woods City Schools and for recognizing us. We really think it's an honor. So I'm going to just do something off script. So for all of us in the room that are part of the Divine Nine, please stand up and re-recognize. So thank you again. And if they come, we'll come make sure that they get their certificate as well as the photo opportunity.
So...
Did we find, oh, we found our city council member? One. Come on. Would you like to accept this, Terrence, on behalf of the... Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
I'd like for you to say a few words, too. A little bit about what fraternity you represent would be fine.
There's no bias there whatsoever.
No bias whatsoever. So good evening, everybody. Councilman Harrison, Forest Park, also a proud alum of this fine school district, but when I was here was the Green Hills Forest Park School District. So I'm showing my age. So I'd like to thank the school board for this award and also too like to thank the residents of Forest Park, Green Hills and Springfield Township. So a couple of weeks ago, we did have the National Pan-Hellenic Council annual picnic in our beautiful park right down the street here. And one of the things was just to give back to the community. So with everybody for the Divine Nine fraternities and sororities, being with them, same thing for Superintendent Smith, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. We decided to give some school supplies back to the school district. So we had quite a bit of supplies. Do you have them, Ms. Depp?
Yes, they're in Superintendent Smith's truck.
Okay. And we did put them in council, in one of the council rooms, because there's quite a bit of supplies. So we'd like to thank everybody who donated and also thank everybody who will receive this. And I just want to thank you for allowing me to be here for this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
And finally, for all the fraternities and sororities, we totally appreciate you, especially you, sir. Absolutely. Thank you for everything.
You wanted to say, yeah, that's what you wanted.
That's okay.
That's okay.
All right. So, Madam Vice President, I thought there was another one from the steppers.
There is.
Okay.
So the Board of Education would like to thank the Forest Park Senior Steppers for donating school supplies. This organization has been collecting and donating to the district for 15 years. And this was started by Pearl Lewis, who recently passed away. So I want to say thank you, a special thank you to the senior steppers for all that they do and for their donation to the school district. Superintendent also has those supplies in his truck as well. So if we can all just give a round of applause for the senior steppers and in a moment of silence for Ms. Lewis.
Madam President, Vice President, that's all for the District Honors, Recognizations and Gifts. Next month, we will have the opportunity to bring students in for their recognitions. We usually don't do it until September. And a lot of artwork, a lot of academic honors. So stay tuned for that. That's usually an incredible highlight.
The next agenda item is 4.01, a recess. Do you want to take a recess to dismiss the...
I mean, they look eager, they look eager to stay, but...
We will take a five-minute recess at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back in session. I'm going to go back to an agenda item, Agenda Item 2.01. In my effort to recognize everyone, which is the exciting part of the meeting, and to dismiss the administrators who gave their time and came, I inadvertently, and it is on the agenda, so if our president is watching, it's my error, not hers. So the Agenda Item 2.01, amendment to the agenda. I need a motion to appoint Randy Seymour to make the recommendation for Personnel Schedule D, Call Center extra duty assignment.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Randy Seymour, Treasurer, to make the recommendation for Personnel Schedules, the Transportation, Call Center, extra duty assignment.
Thank you. It has been motioned.
I'll second.
Second? Thank you. It's been motioned. And second, are there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burden?
Aye.
The vote to approve agenda item change passes unanimously. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant? I do believe we have another guest that just arrived. So I think it would be appropriate to recognize him.
Absolutely. Could you say your name for that?
Oh, sorry. My name's Kate Stanton.
Hello, Mr. Stanton. And judging by your apparel, you are a member of...
Alpha Phi.
Alpha Phi. Yes, would you like to speak? Councilman Harrison just took this wonderful certificate, but would like for you to speak on behalf of NHPC. I know, putting you on the spot. Sorry, I want your moment of fame. Please.
No, I'm just going to just...
Yeah? Why Witten Woods, the donation, how this came about?
And say hello.
And say hello, yes.
All right, hello. So the, there was an ask put out before we had our Divine Nine Greek picnic on Sunday, August 13th. And I believe, I'm not exactly sure who put the ask out, but we were all asked as a body to donate school supplies for Witten Woods Elementary School. So we immediately put the word out to all the organizations via their email campaigns, tried to get the word out as quickly as possible. And I didn't get eyes on the exact amount that was donated. I believe, as before I was leaving, I saw about four or five boxes full. So, yeah, I'd say that's a pretty good, pretty good start for the school year.
More like 15 boxes.
15, okay. So I left a little, a little early after I stopped cooking. So I stand corrected. Okay, 15 boxes. Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you again. And again, thank you. It's a pleasure for those of us who are part of the D9 to know that our organizations are committed to serving the community and that you all chose the Witten Woods community to serve. So thank you again. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you. Next on our agenda is 5.01, Public Comments. Seeing none, we'll move to Agenda Item 6.01. Witten Woods Teachers Association Representative? Next agenda item is 6.02, Ohio Association of Public School Employees OC Representative?
Good evening, Madam Vice President, Superintendent Smith, Board and Community Members. On behalf of OC, myself and our Secretary, Robert Hodge, we just wanted to say good evening and thank you for observing us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item 7.01, the approval of minutes from 7:31, 2023, and 8:14, 2023. Witten Woods Board of Education minutes are presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the approval of minutes as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burden?
The vote passes unanimously.
Aye.
Thank you. It's like he's going to say aye anyway. Great. I'm moving along, guys. The next item on the agenda is Treasurer Report 8.01. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, just one month into the new year, for the month of July, revenues for the general fund were approximately $13.4 million. Most of that was real estate tax collections for the August real estate tax advances and then approximately $1.8 million from the state foundation. Our general fund expenditures for the month of July were $3.8 million. And during the month of July, the district started its new year and issued approximately $8 million in contracts, mainly $2.6 million for special instructional services, $2.4 million for maintenance contracts, and about $1.5 million instructional services for softwood supplies. So most of it's all to show that we have our funds committed and serving the district.
Thank you.
And then the activity for all funds, the district had approximately, in all funds, approximately $26 million, of which was unencumbered at the time. And a list of each fund and how much was in each fund is provided to you on page five.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order? It has been... Oh, yes, my apologies. Board, a motion is in order to submit these financial statements for audit?
You just submit them for audit?
Oh, that's right, 8.01. I'm moving along, you guys. I guess it's Monday and back to school, and I'm already ready for the treasurer's report to go on to another thing. Now we're at the Treasurer's Recommendations, Agenda Item 9.01.
Right. Our investments for the month of July, we had approximately $44 million invested, of which we earned approximately $133,000, general fund $109,000, and we're still earning interest on our building funds of $23,000 for the month of July.
Board, now a motion is in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burden?
Aye.
The vote for approval for Treasurer's Investment Report for July 2023, Investments passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item 9.02, Personnel Schedule D. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. As requested by the board, I would like to recommend Schedule D to approve, Schedule D as presented, for the personnel schedules.
Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Schedule D as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burden?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Item 10.01, Report from the Superintendent.
Yes.
Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you. Witten Woods South Campus, South Garden Proposal. And I think Mr. Shute actually has a great overview of why you're doing it and how it looks and how it's going to look. So podium is yours, sir.
Colonel, thanks. Mr. Smith, Ms. Seymour, Board, thanks for having me. Very quickly, a proposal was put in place last year, and it's actually coming to fruition. We are building a South Campus School Garden on southwest corner of our building. It's going to consist of 12 raised beds that surround an open space that can serve essentially as an outdoor classroom. Space is going to be available to all students of all grade levels and the teachers. It's really developed in three phases. The first is going to be the 12 beds that we're putting in place this year, and then hopefully next year, the need arises for another, up to 24 beds. And then beyond that, all of the things that might make this space a beautiful, a more beautiful space for years to come. It's going to be an outdoor opportunity to get our students and our staff learning how to nurture, learning how to grow, learning how to eat healthy. So we're really looking forward to giving this opportunity to all of the kids at South Campus.
You know, I really want to thank you guys for coming up with the idea. But the other thing for the modifications, because we were concerned about, when you mentioned all students being able to participate, and we knew that some of the aisles were narrow and we had to talk to you about the modifications for wheelchair accessibility. You did it with ease, so thank you. I totally appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Because sometimes people say all, but they only mean a few. Thank you.
Yeah, our pleasure.
Do we have, do we have a rendering or anything like that? To know what it's going to look like?
It will come.
Okay.
Not yet, because this is, they had to raise the funds first.
Gotcha.
And so they've got the funds on the table and a few drainage issues that Mr. Denny's working out with the landscape. And from there, we'll start bringing you pictures on the way, just like we've done for buildings. So, good question, thank you.
I'll be happy to share the proposal and then, of course, yeah, as it comes about.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Hopefully it'll look just like we're proposing it to the law.
Hey, I'm excited for that, man. Thank you so much.
Good, thanks. So are we. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Ms. Smith.
Ready? Next report? Ms. Bray? What are you doing, taking blood pressure or something? Looks like one of those fingers. So for the people that are watching at home, this is an overview of the Ohio Department of Education Audit that we are participating in. Ms. Bray is going to give you an overview of how far we've gone and what our next steps are.
I can just speak about it, if that's okay? If you want me to just talk about it? Good evening, Board. My apologies for the delay. We were having technical difficulties. So I want to discuss or talk about our Special Education Audit. Previously, they have changed the word "audit" to "monitoring review." So this is just an update. So initially, at the beginning of the summer, we talked about the audit that we were having throughout the district for our special education programs. And we talked about not only is this for students with disabilities, but it's for all students. So when they conducted the audit, they conducted things around our district. So we have been going through professional development for all teachers, and that includes our general education teachers, our gifted teachers, English language teachers, and our teachers who specialize with students with disabilities. They are called intervention specialists. Our team continues to consult with SST13 Team to review the findings of the audit and remedies for future goals that aligns with the district's Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan, otherwise known as CCIP for the State of Ohio. Also, we review and refine existing district practices such as PBIS, MTSS. PBIS, as you know, is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And MTSS stands for Multi-Tiered System Supports. And that's to ensure that these programs are cohesive across all buildings and throughout the district. So currently, that's what we're working on. And again, professional development is happening, continuing to happen. So are there any questions about that?
How long is the audit? How long will it last?
We have gone through the audit. We have, they have shared the findings. However, the professional development, the ongoing practices and consultation will go through March of 2024.
Okay. So, Ms. Bray, can you talk to the board a little bit about the level of cooperation from the staff? How are they cooperating with the audit? And are you satisfied with their level of collaboration and cooperation?
It has been a full collaboration throughout the entire district. It's amazing to have team members that I work with here at Witten Woods, the administrators, to the teachers, to the paraprofessionals, to my executive colleagues. It has just been an amazing opportunity to work with all these people. I mean, they have been very cooperative.
And I will tell you, the state support team and the Ohio Department of Education corresponded with me and said that the level of collaboration that you have created for the team is something that they've not seen before. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the opportunity as well. I really appreciate your support.
All right, and we can applaud for that.
Do have a question. Is it possible for us to get those findings? I know you said they shared them.
Yes.
Yes, and we can go over them specifically if you'd like. It would take a few hours to do that, but if you want to schedule another time to sit down and review that, I'll be more than happy.
I think that at the September meeting, you should, we will bring a sample. If you bring a sample that we can review, we can actually have a conversation at the work session so we can take a deeper dive.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next presentation, 10.03, will be the Summer School Report. And as Ms. Bray mentioned, there is some technical difficulties. Any way of getting through this, Ms. Hobbs? We're just in a, in a mode here.
Change the resolution on the computer in order to have it shut off.
Okay.
Good afternoon, or good evening, shall I say. I'm going to introduce the information as it relates to the summer school for this past summer for the South Campus. Dr. Ragland will actually give an overview for the North Campus pieces of information. I just got to get this up and running. Okay, for the summer school structures for this past summer, we had summer school four days a week, June fifth through June twenty-ninth, Monday through Thursday only. We did not have session on June 10th, which was June nineteenth. So our students did have a full four-week of instructional methods within the scope of their day within the building. And the locations for the two summer school sessions with South Campus and North Campus. Our students actually were there from eight-thirty to twelve PM. Our teachers had planning in the morning, and was there an extra half hour to support the students if needed. Just to go over the daily schedule, we did provide breakfast for the students from eight-thirty to eight-forty-five. They had phonics from eight-forty-five to nine o'clock, the Word of the Day and read aloud from nine to nine-thirty. We had MAP preparation and test prep for a half hour. Recession, we wanted to kind of give them an opportunity to decompress. The state test practice, and then they had lunch, and then they exited the building.
Dr. Martin, just for the board's review, can you tell them what MAP stands for?
Yes, NWE MAP is our assessment that kind of assess the aptitude of our students. We have MAP testing three times throughout the school year to assess where our students are and provide interventions as they go. For the total enrollment for the third-grade focus of our summer session, there were ninety-five students that were enrolled in the program. The average daily attendance was eighty-six students. So we did get the majority of our students there, which was exciting. For our breakfast for third grade, we served seven-hundred-and-thirty-three breakfasts to our students. And for our lunch program, we had one-thousand-three-hundred-and-five lunches served throughout the course of the summer school session. Now, for our purpose for our summer school for third grade, we had students that were actually, that did not make the proficient mark for the assessment. And so they had two additional opportunities. They had the NWE MAP, which is our district assessment, and then they had the Ohio State Testing, which is the state of Ohio. So on June twenty-seventh, the MAP, which is our district assessment, was administered to all the students. And then we had fourteen students meet the proficient mark and have passing scores through our district assessment. And then for the Ohio State Testing, we had thirteen additional students with passing scores.
So Dr. Martin, for students that participated in the summer program, what is the monitoring plan for those students for the fall? We know they had some struggles in the summer, and we know that they may not be up to par. But what's the plan for the fall?
Yes, we are going to provide those students and target those students to have additional tutoring opportunities. Through the state of Ohio, we have to make sure that we have a certain amount of hours outside the classroom hours
Very good, thank you.
to support their learning. So we will definitely be keeping track of how they progress. Through our first MAP session, we'll be able to see where they are as fourth graders. But then we'll be able to actually make our plan or put our plan together to see how many of our students that we will need to provide additional supports to.
Okay.
So Dr. Martin, just to be clear, so we had fourteen pass the first time with our district tests, and thirteen for the Ohio State Testing. Is that correct?
That is correct, for the summer session.
For the summer session. So then we have about fifty students that still haven't passed? Or are there fifty students that need additional support throughout the year?
There are, they need additional support throughout the year. And what happened, like with the budget bill change for third-grade reading? So at the end of the summer, they actually passed the law to be able to promote the students to fourth grade with additional support, with additional interventions. So prior to that, we would have had probably eighty or so students retained in third grade. Now we don't. We did get some through with the MAP and with the Ohio State Test, and we'll be able to provide support to a little, I would say it was fifty-six. Mr. Holman, is, do you think that's a good number of individuals that will need support throughout the scope of the school year? Okay, so fifty-four. But we'll have a better understanding of where they are once they take that first fall administration of the MAP.
And when is that set to occur?
That is, yeah, next week.
Is it possible for us to get a report after those results, just to see where these students are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I was going to ask, on the ones that didn't pass, did you, did you see progress? I mean, even though they didn't pass, did they do better on the test? Even though they didn't pass, or is there something else you're seeing?
Yes, some students did make progress, and some were basically the same. So we know that we have to provide additional support to be able to get the students where they need to be, as fourth-grade students, so that they can continue to grow and make that academic progress moving forward.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was one of the things about the retention of the third graders that I was going to report out on our legislative report, House Bill one seventeen, to eliminate the retention of the third-grade reading guarantee and expand additional support for those students so they can move on to the fourth grade with, you know, provided additional support. So other than that, we would have had an over flooded third-grade classroom.
Yeah, Dr. Johnson, even without the legislative conversation, Dr. Martin and her team were already working on giving the students additional support. The problem that we see is, if a student struggles getting into fourth grade, we know that that kind of creates a bigger storm for later on. So we can say you made it, but we want you to be in a situation where Mr. Burdy just asked a question, what kind of achievement model did we see? But we can see growth, but we're trying to really get the kids to get to the level of achievement.
Right. And we're excited to be able to offer, you know, our students tutoring. We just have to kind of frame it and make sure that we are able to kind of provide, you know, the transportation and everything for our students.
Right. And I'd like the board too, and the audience and anybody watching on Waycross to understand, we have thirty-three languages spoken in our district, and some of those deficiencies are language barriers. And what we don't want to do is automatically put students in a situation where they're students with disabilities, because they have, some of them have deficiencies in their own language. Our goal is to get them through all of it, even with the language barriers that they come with.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Ragland.
Thank you, Dr. Martin.
See, folks, if all the students came to Wooden Woods from other countries at the same time, all first graders, that would be a different situation. But they come in first, they come in eighth, they come in ninth, they come whenever they come. And I think it's important that the public understand that it's our responsibility to get them where we need them to be, regardless of how they come to the district.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good evening, board, and superintendent, and treasurer. So I am going to talk about the summer school session at the high school this year. And it's very similar to the elementary school. Summer school was held at our North Campus. The time was eight to twelve. Our students were here from eight-thirty to twelve o'clock. And they had breakfast at the beginning of their day. The day, the structure of the day was a little different, because they are high school students. And so they were here from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, and they pretty much worked on their coursework. So we had a number of students who were attempting to earn credits throughout the day. And so they did not have breaks as such as elementary would, but they did work for about three hours with a half an hour break, depending on, at the teacher's discretion, I should say. So we had about a hundred and twenty students. Our hundred and twenty students did not show every day. For high school, it was, I should say, varied, meaning that we had, and it was flexible. Our students cycled in and out as they needed. So for example, if a student only needed one credit or half a credit, they were able to start and finish in the amount of time it took them to start and finish. There wasn't a prescribed number of days, or they had to be here for two weeks. However, they could finish in enough time, they were able to do that. So if they were able to finish in two weeks, they were able to cycle out, turn their Chromebook in, and exit summer school with their credit completed.
Yeah, one other thing that the high school put into play, which I was thrilled about, it wasn't just about the credit, but it's about mastering the course. And because most of these kids will definitely have to take another course after this. So many students across the country struggle with Algebra One. And that was really the gatekeeper, where we were trying to get kids to understand and be very, very, just to master that course, because other maths, three more maths are on the way. And so it's not just getting the credit, it's getting the grade and understanding the mastery behind it, so that they can move on and not need summer school every year.
And in so doing, it's prescriptive in summer school. So students take a diagnostic, and the diagnostic determines where their gaps are. And so they work on filling those gaps during the summer, rather than spending the entire time trying to make up every standard within the scope of a semester or a year.
Right. How many people have in the room taught Algebra One? All right. You cannot teach that course in the summer. So it has to be very, very specific, based on the deficiencies that the students have, to work on those deficiencies. Otherwise, students will tell you, I've already had this before.
So the focus then of the students, like you say, was prescriptive based on a diagnostic test that they took at the beginning? And then they learned, and then they take the same test at the end? Was it like a before and after kind of thing? Okay, so it was, and then finishing that, completing that successfully, they would have recovered whatever credit they were missing? Plus, hopefully mastering the subject to go on to the next year and do that.
That is the plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I just want to be clear and repeat that. Thank you.
High school served a hundred and seventy-four breakfasts, as well as two-hundred-and-eighty-three lunches during that time. Algebra One had the most credits attempted. There were twenty-eight point five credits earned out of a possible, out of a possible forty credits. The total number of credits earned overall was seventy-four point five.
And what the administration does with those students is, once they've had the summer school experience, they talk to them often and say, okay, you had a deficiency, you're back on track. Now you have to keep this moving in the right direction. So it's not just about the credits, it's not just about the grade, it's about the GPA. So the GPA becomes a big factor in there. Because you're talking about post-secondary opportunities, you have to have the GPA in the body of knowledge as well.
You said seventy-four credits earned?
Seventy-four point five credits were earned. The vast majority of that were Algebra One, but we had other subjects as well.
Were all students successful in earning the credits they attempted?
I will not say that all students were successful, but the vast majority of them were successful.
And what's the plan for those students who weren't successful?
Those students would have to earn their credit, so they would have to re-attempt.
Okay, that's great again. Okay.
Thank you.
And that concludes the high school portion. There was not a middle school summer school this year.
So Dr. Ragland, give the board an overview of ten point zero four, the New Tech update.
So we took a trip to Dallas, Texas for the 2023 New Tech Annual Conference this year. And we took about forty, probably about thirty-eight to forty teachers to the conference. I would say overall, it was very enlightening and successful. We all participated according to where we were, in terms of what knowledge we needed. So there was NTN one oh one, PBL one oh one, as well as summer gathering. Some of us are further along in our PBL journey. So depending on where we were, New Tech gave us options, and we selected the track according to where we were, or where we were according to our journey. I participated in the summer gathering and learned quite a bit about, you know, new research that New Tech has developed, and cross-disciplinary research about the co-teaching content areas, as well as using continuous improvement within PBL. There were other teachers and administrators' buildings who were engaged in new PBL or NTN one oh one work, because they're new to our district, new to PBL, and so they needed the foundation. And so those administrators and teachers are working together, and they will have their plan for implementation in order to build capacity. I know Dr. Martin and I have also discussed how we can build our current contract, and we had discussed our coaching development program. We had purchased slots to also help build capacity. One of the things that came out of attending the conferences is that teachers want New Tech's presence in our district. So we did that early on in our journey. And we got derailed by the pandemic, like most districts. But now we will be bringing New Tech back into our buildings in terms of building capacity within our teachers in PBL.
And board, keep in mind, the building design, this building is designed for New Tech. Many buildings are not, so we were very intentional. We're all in one hundred percent from preschool all the way to twelve. And it does really help us with students learning how to collaborate with each other. You look at what the industry, the job industry is asking for, do you know how to work with other people? And so we're putting that up there at the top.
One question I was thinking when you were talking. So the coaching and the development, were the teachers and the people who went to this training, did they go through some of that, so they can bring it back and to coach and train? Or will they be the trainees or the trainers? I guess that's my question.
Neither. So they were spending time learning about PBL. So learning about the foundation and how they could use PBL in their instruction. A lot of our attendees were also brand-new teachers who have never taught using PBL. So whether they were new to us or new to the profession altogether, they need that foundation. Other teachers went as a refresher, because they haven't been to NTAC since before the pandemic. And so they wanted to build that capacity within themselves to help their administrator lead the charge in their buildings. But the NTN Coach Development Program is something that we will be sending teachers in our district to. So it's training that they will be provided once a month for a few hours. They'll be committed to virtual training. And so they will then have assignments that they'll work with their building administrators and other teachers in their building to implement that work and build that capacity within other teachers that they encounter and work within their day.
And Dr. Johnson, in addition to that, we're going to take the big leap, that's what I call it. We're going to bring students back who've already graduated from Wooden Woods, and give them the opportunity to meet with the board in a conversation at a board meeting to say, or to give you an overview, this is how project-based learning helped me in my next step. So we know that some of those students have become very instrumental in being leaders in their universities. They're not shy, they do all these presentations. And so now they're saying, this is comfortable. I mean, imagine being in a full freshman class, and the teacher's asking the first day, who wants to present, and Wooden Woods kids are standing up at UC, Tennessee State, Georgia, Alabama, anywhere, saying, I don't mind, because I'm very familiar with this process. So the confidence that it delivers as it relates- So, the confidence that it delivers as it relates to project-based learning is actually key to our survival.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Dr. Raglin. Superintendent?
Next on the item, on the agenda, excuse me, is ten point zero nine. The report presented by Ms. Wilson, Executive Director of Human Resources and Legal Services, and also Ms. Bray, Director of Student Services.
We're presenting tonight in our capacity as co-supervisors of the enrollment department.
Can we get these presentations sent to us?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I put it in Board Docs, so you should already have it.
You'll get all of them.
Well, I'm in Board Doc. I mean, you're not.
It is. It's ours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, some of the reason why we really want to project this is so that you can see the numbers and how they have reflected in our district. So, currently, our district enrollment as of eight twenty-five, August twenty-fifth, is four thousand one hundred thirty-five. And that includes our resident and non-resident students in addition to our students at Scarlet, Scarlet Oaks, the Great Oaks. The north campus enrollment, two thousand eighty-three students. At the high school, it's fourteen twenty-three. So, in ninth grade, there are currently three hundred and fifty-five students. Grade ten, three hundred and fifty-three. Grade eleven, four hundred and forty-seven. Grade twelve, two hundred and sixty-five. And grade twenty-three are three students. And what that means is those are students with disabilities who diplomas are deferred. Wynton Woods Middle School total enrollment is six hundred and sixty. Grade seven, three hundred and thirteen students. And grade eight, three hundred and forty-seven students currently. And just remember, students are still being enrolled, and this was last week's data. South Campus Enrollment, currently one thousand six hundred ninety-five. The intermediate, which are grades five and six, total enrollment is five hundred seventy-three. Grade five is three hundred and four. And grade six, two hundred and sixty-nine students. The elementary, grades three and four, total enrollment is five hundred and sixty-four. The breakdown for grade three is two hundred and seventy-seven. And grade four is two hundred and eighty-six. And the primary, which are grades, first and second grade, the breakdown, grade one, two hundred and seventy-two. And grade two, two hundred and eighty-six. And our central campus enrollment, which are our preschool and kindergarten students, the total enrollment number currently is three hundred and fifty-seven. Kindergarten is two hundred and fifty-six. And our preschool is a hundred and one. So, before we go, before we look at the demographics, I just want to premise that when I started with the district, which was about twelve years ago, we had less than twenty-five hundred students. So, now we're increasing that to almost an additional two thousand. So, things are changing, ever-changing. So, some of our demographics, this is based on last year's data. And so, the American Indian, Alaskan Native, it's less than ten students. But, our Asian population, a hundred and eighty-seven students. Our Black, Non-Hispanic, two thousand eighty-five students. Our Hispanic population, nine forty-three. Multiracial, three hundred and four students. Pacific Islander, less than ten students. And our White, Non-Hispanic, two hundred and ninety-three, which is a total of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three, last year's data. But, this does not include our out-of-district students, such as the Scarlets and those that are placed out of district. Are there any questions so far? Okay, so currently, this year's data, and they're still coming in, and this is as of August twenty-fourth. Our American Indian and Alaskan Native population, less than ten students. Asian population, one hundred and fifty-five. Black, Non-Hispanic, two thousand one hundred and sixty. Hispanic, one thousand seventy. Multiracial, three hundred and eighty-six. Pacific Islander, less than ten students. And our White, Non-Hispanic, two hundred and ninety-five, which gives us a total of four thousand seventy-eight students. But, that does not include, it says JFS full-time, that's Scarlet, but it does include our open-enrolled students, which are, we have three hundred and eleven open-enrolled students as of last week.
And I'd like to say something about the open-enrolled students. People assume that all of the open-enrolled students are coming from necessarily outside of the district. That's true, but many of them used to live in the district. And since we have a unique program, project-based learning, we wanted those kids to be able to continue on with their educational journey and not displace them because they moved away. Students don't have the control of where they live. That's a parent decision. But, we do not transport them, but they do have the opportunity to stay at Wynton Woods.
Do we know how many students currently were here but had to move out but still come back as open-enrolled? Do we know that number?
It changes every day. It can be, it's very interesting. But, parents have asked, "Can my student stay? Can my child stay?" And they have some opportunities in the city, you know, in Cincinnati Public. And they're saying, "We prefer to be here because this is where my child has been." But, I can get you more definitive information so you can see exactly what this rotation looks like. We've had several students move out of the district. And before we can complete the assessments, they move back in because something changes. I can move with a grandparent. I can move with an aunt and uncle. And we are very, very flexible about letting our kids stay in our district.
Do the kids who leave the district because they're moving somewhere and want to go be open-enrolled, do they have to go through the open enrollment process?
Yes, sir. They do. They do. And again, as I mentioned, transportation is not provided.
Correct.
Yes, so if they leave the district and want to remain in the district, they have to complete an intent-to-remain application. And that is reviewed, and sometimes they are accepted and sometimes they're not, just depending on the distance away. And that also includes our foster care students. And the reason why our foster care students continue to be open-enrolled in our district is because we want to make the best determination for each of those students. We want to provide consistency. A lot of our students in foster care do not have that consistency if they're moving from home to home.
Correct.
And school is their only foundation. So, some of those numbers are reflected in open enrollment.
And we've had the exit conversations with students where they're moving out of the district and the administrators are great. They give an overview to the parents and they say, "You can stay at Wynton Woods." And parents are saying, "No, I'll make some other changes and go to where I live now." And before the week is out, they're saying, "Oh, no, this is not going to work out. We'd like to stay at Wynton Woods." What makes it difficult is we have at one of our schools that starts so early. And we ask them, "Are you willing to make the commitment and the sacrifice in order to come and be part of the school district?" And overall, it works for them.
So, this is our student with disabilities demographics. And this is based on our current numbers as of August twenty-fourth. And again, those numbers are ever-changing. So, I would just list the disability category. So, AU stands for autism. Currently, we have eighty-two students who are identified under that category throughout the district. This is a very high number. And this is across the state of Ohio that students are now being identified under this category versus ED, emotionally disturbed, or OHI historically. So, now they're seeing the differences and they're coming up with this category.
The other thing, and I'd like for the board to really see it clearly. We are very careful about labeling students because some of those labels will deter them from forgetting other opportunities later. Some of these labels up there, unless we work the student through it, they cannot participate in the armed forces. They cannot be a postal worker, firefighter, police officer because of some of the labels that they have. So, we are very careful. Ms. Bray, I applaud you for your work. She sent out letters this summer letting parents know, "Your child no longer fits into this disability category. They've grown enough, so they're actually making great progress." Parents need to hear it. They need to know that, you know, my child comes in with a disability, though they leave with that same disability. Some of the disabilities are so profound that it will happen. But, others that are marginal that we can work through, we put a team of people together and we say, "We can work you out of this situation so that your future is solidified in a different way."
And also, just depending on the category, depends on the assistance that's needed for our students. So, again, the severity or the more involved the student is, the more assistance and resources the district needs for those students. DD is a preschool category, which is developmental delayed, and that's seventeen students. ED is emotionally disturbed, that's twenty-seven. And that number has decreased because our autism numbers have increased. HI is hearing impaired, four students. ID is intellectually disabled. And what that used to be was categorized as CD, cognitive disability. MD is multiple disabilities, twenty-seven students. OHI minor, a hundred and twelve. OHI major, one student. SH is speech, that's fifty students. SLD, two hundred and ten students. TBI is traumatic brain injury, two students. I'm sorry, three students. And BI is visually impaired, two students.
Ms. Bray, can you take it back a little bit? I know you went through the OHI, but give the board what the OHI represents.
Other health impairment, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And what's the SLD?
Specific learning disability.
Thank you.
Specific. And these numbers are aligned with the state of Ohio, districts across the state of Ohio. So, our numbers aren't escalated or elevated. We're right along with the state of Ohio.
You did mention that the AU category was increased. Is that because they were differentiating the spectrum disorders differently? And are we aligned with the school district our size with other? So, for a school district our size, is that number higher than our?
It's higher than it's ever been.
Okay.
We are, it is challenging because our numbers are higher. And depending on where that student falls on the spectrum, depends on the resources that are needed. So...
Yeah. I think the other thing, Ms. Bray, that we have to really pay attention to. Parents are becoming savvy about their children's education, and they should be. They should be looking out for them every step of the way. A parent says, "Okay, my child's going to be classified as emotionally disturbed or autistic. You tell me." They're going to pick what they pick because that means there are some other opportunities and some flexibility in what services can happen for my child.
I guess my question is, how are we with fielding educational professionals and handling these multiple five hundred and sixty-seven students across the whole district, right, from kindergarten to twelfth grade?
And these numbers do not reflect the students that are out of district. So, these are in-house numbers that we have to cater to during the school day, every day.
And what she means by the out-of-district, there were some students that we knew, based on our educational platform, we could not serve those kids with fidelity. So, they are placed outside of our community.
So, you send them to a different school, a different type of learning environment?
Yeah, some of them are onsite. They live there.
Okay, yeah.
So, either the team decides to place them out of the district or it's a parent choice, private or parochial. And then Scarlet, those numbers are not reflected because other entities are giving those services. So, these are the services that we actually provide to the students who have challenges. And then also, we have eighty-one students who have five old fours.
And just to be, just to be clear for the public, we want to serve every child. So, no matter how your child learns, it's important that they have the correct resources and that as a district, we're committed to making sure they have those resources. I hate labels. I know that they're there. They have to be. However, we want to make sure that every kid has an opportunity to learn the way he or she or they, them, learn the best.
Correct. I think the other part, and it's going to come up in the next part of our board meeting. It's not just about the labels and it's not just about the disabilities. It's how we communicate to those parents. Because we talk about having thirty-three languages. How do we communicate with the parents with fidelity so they know exactly how their child is doing?
Absolutely. And to go along with that is the reason why we're having professional development so that all teachers are on board because we're teaching all students, not just students with disabilities and not just our general education students because we're under one curriculum. They should be exposed to the content, but it just depends on how they receive it and how we're going to teach it to them.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. This kind of sparked when you were talking. With respect to like statewide testing, are the students with disabilities, they're still required to take the statewide testing and pass at the same level?
Yes. Most of our students are still required to take the test and also pass the test. And they have really updated on what we have to do to ensure that that happens. They don't want just our students with disabilities to have an Ohio certificate. They want them to have a regular diploma like everyone else in spite of their disability. And so, hence, the professional development that we're having so that all teachers can be prepared and understand how they teach all kids.
Ms. Bray, can you mention one other thing about the delayed diploma? And what that looks like?
Yes, so students who, students who are, students who have a disability can remain in school up until their twenty-second birthday. So, when they turn eighteen, they can either decide to take a certificate or graduate, or they can defer their diploma and continue their education through vocational training, stay here on campus and receive more education. So, they do receive a lot more services so that they can be independent outside these four walls.
And tell me how that affects our graduation rate?
Anytime a diploma is deferred, it's a knock towards our graduation rate. It decreases.
Okay, so we're talking to parents about the fidelity of education. And we notice that their child needs more substantial help. And we make a decision as a team that we're going to defer your diploma to give you the help that you need so that you'll be able to take care of yourself when you graduate. And the state says, "Because you're deferring their diploma, we're going to give you a negative on your graduation rate because they didn't graduate on time." No?
Doesn't make sense, but...
Okay. And I think that's the thing the public needs to understand. So, the district is working, doing it with fidelity because we care about the kid. And there are some districts that say, "We're not going to take that hit. Everybody's graduating on time." We will never do that because it's not right.
Right.
Okay.
I would just add that I would like to give kudos to our enrollment team. They've been working very hard this summer to support the number of enroll, new enrollees that we have. And so, that's Laura Wilkie, Jocelyn Harara. And then, we've had some Liz Ruhlman, who we borrowed from the high school, and Jacqueline Harara, we also borrowed from the Enrollment Center. They've been working night and day to get kids enrolled on time. So, if you see them, please, you know, pat them on their...
Yeah, I think the other part, Ms. Wilson, and thank you for that. You know, we've become so technologically savvy, at least we think we are. And we put everything online, everything is a phone app, this. And parents are saying, "I don't really understand it. Where's the paper and pencil?" So, that team has been working diligently with the parents to say, "We're going to take you slow and get you through the process. It may take a little longer, but we're going to get you where you need to be."
All while incorporating a new program, final forms, and enrolling our students. So, we're trying to be fast and effective. But, all while doing that, it's a whole new system as well that they have to learn.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hobbs, parents square.
All right, agenda item ten point zero six. Yes, oh, before, excuse me...
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it.
So, before you guys leave, again, we're going to just stop real quick. We'd like to get the members of the D nine who came and who also donated school supplies. We can get you just a quick picture, real quick.
I just felt the energy that when the Zeta stood up, you were going to bring them back. I I just felt the energy that when the Zeta stood up, you were gonna bring them back. So way to go, way to go, way to go, way to go, Dad. Way to go, that was absolutely divine. So other people can walk out, but when the blue jacket stood up, you're like, hold it, let's get this picture.
She saw the pink when she left.
All right, let's get them, let's get them up to the podium.
We're just gonna pause, we're gonna go off agenda just for a quick second and get a picture. Again, thank you guys for your contribution to the district.
Let them say a few words about.
Yes.
Their experience.
We've had two ladies, I I'm sorry that our.
We would like a picture with all of you all together.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, a little bit?
This is historically, we just wanna map this out. So you can face wherever you want them at, Drew, I don't have to direct everything.
No, you're really good at it, Dr. Johnson.
That was, that was pretty, that was pretty clever.
That was Dr. Johnson.
I was getting nervous, I will be honest, it was me, it was me. Good, that's perfect.
All right, fantastic, thank you, thank you.
All right, now if you guys wanna go to the podium and say a few words, you can.
The gentlemen have already spoken to ladies this return.
Oh, did the, did the, did the guy representing the cap, did you speak, sir?
Yes, he did, he was the first one, yes.
So thank you all so much for inviting us, and we appreciate it. My name is Shayla Bradford, I'm the president of the National Panhellenic Council of the Greater Cincinnati Area. So we historically have a picnic, some, usually in Cincinnati, Cincinnati proper. And this year, we we moved it, we reached out instantly. Brother Harrison here is of course a member of our organization. But we, you all instantly opened your doors here in Forest Park, and we truly appreciate that. And the only ask was that we do some sort of service project in your community. School supplies, all of our organizations, one of our principles is scholarship, so that's where we wanted to give back. We're the Greater Cincinnati National Panhellenic Council, okay? We're not Cincinnati. So if there's any opportunities, you know, we've hearing about test scores or anything, we have undergraduates at the University of Cincinnati, Xavier University. They need community service hours, future educators, please reach out to us. Any, you know, if what, I'm not trying to overcommit our organizations, but any way that we can help, we we are open to, you know, hear what services we can help provide. All of our organizations have youth or, youth auxiliary groups where we take on youth and we do fun activities with them and college tours. And then we also break down life skills with them as well. So thank you again for recognizing us, and please invite us back to your community events.
Well, that was the question I was gonna ask because the doors were open so nicely. You plan to return?
Of course, I mean.
Okay, that's what we want.
Let me, let me say this, in the past, we've always asked, where can we help, you know, and we have to send thousands of emails.
Right here.
That's not what we had to do, yes. Wenton Woods, Forest Park, you did not do that to us. We said, what do we, where can we help? And I was getting, my phone was blowing up from several different people, and I received several different emails. So we wanna come back, so.
We'd love to have you back.
Yes, and she, obviously, you know, you said the blue jacket, so that's my sorority sister there, so she has my phone number, my my email, so please reach out to us.
You know, people talk about the superintendent in in blue suits, I wore black today intentionally. But I know Deborah Bryant has probably like forty-seven blue dresses, we've seen that at all these meetings. So she must really love our organization, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, bravo.
I'm sorry, I didn't want you all to leave before we got a picture.
No, no.
We're interested in education, so we're being known.
We will definitely be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All right, Parent Square.
Agenda item ten point zero six.
Good evening, Board. I'm here to talk to you about Parent Square, and so excited to announce that we officially launched the new application, August first, twenty twenty-three. The particular evening that I launched, I sent out an email, I I sent out a post, I should say, to the high school parents and students. And just indicated that Parent Square is here and is replacing One Call Now, and immediately started to get some comments back. So I was in my office that evening, and I was really excited to see the comments back because as an author, I'm the only one that sees the comments. One of the comments was from a Spanish-speaking family that said, when is the first day of school for students? So I looked it up, you know, and and was able to type back in English, and they received that message in Spanish. So I really felt the sense of the bridges between like the school district and the community when when that event occurred. And that just really excited me to continue to move forward this summer. Our trainings and staff have been through many preparations. We've had administrative trainings, executive team building, administration level, building support staff, executive team support staff. We went into the departments with food service, transportation and technology, and teacher trainings. It was a required PD session during our back-to-school weeks. So we've kind of hit like many of the different aspects, and we kind of grew the team from like the nucleus on out to the teachers. So many of us have been trained at this point. Since the launch, I would say we are ninety-eight percent contactable. We have still a few student records that need to be updated with bad phone numbers, bad email addresses, et cetera. But one statistic that Parent Square shows us is what our contactable rate is, and we're currently sitting at ninety-eight percent. Since that time as well, we've done three hundred and thirty-seven posts as a district, twenty-nine alerts, five thousand nine hundred and sixty direct messages, seventeen calendar events, and eight items requested.
And we've been using Parent Square for how long?
Less than a month.
Less than a month, very good.
So the direct messages, the five thousand nine hundred and sixty, that's kind of like a a text message between a teacher and a parent or a community member. So there are some threaded discussions happening with that, but that that's a large number. So I really feel that after our teachers received their training and back to school, they really went to introduce themselves and talk to the parents about their kids, and that's great. I mean, kudos to the teachers, that was well done. Interactions would be, this is a perspective that Parent Square allows us to see. Hundred and twenty-seven comments, appreciations of six hundred and twenty-seven, very similar like Facebook posts. Part of the reason with the appreciations is you have to have the application installed in order to do an appreciation. RSVP is a hundred and ninety-four, and items signed up, three. So some of our next steps is we have to continue getting our parents registered and our students registered. Because in in grade seven through twelve, our parent, our students have something called Student Square. We still have nine hundred and twenty more parents to go and eight hundred and sixty-four students to go. Realizing that you don't have to be registered in order to receive the notifications. So we are texting, we are emailing, and parents are receiving that regardless of their Parent Square registration. Also with Parent Square, getting the app allows for the best full experience. The fullest experience is the fact that you can decide how you wanna be communicated with, when you wanna be communicated with, and in what language you wanna be communicated with. So the, getting that app allows our community members to set all of those particular settings. So my message here, it's a little plug, is get the application, and that's where we're at. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. I know when we had One Call Now, the board was part of that, we would get those calls. Is there a way that we could get the?
Absolutely.
Parent Square, like, we don't have, I don't think I've gotten any messages from Parent Square with the new ones. So could we be added some sort of way? Because you did say, you don't have to be registered to receive messages, I'm like, great, then add us, I think we should. I mean, that way we get, we would get the messages like school closings, any emergency alerts, if, you know, school buses are running late or whatever, you know? And then we would be informed as.
I'll definitely get the board signed up, and I wanna do a little plug here for parents about the registration process too. So at wentonwoods.org, Ms. Jackson has put a link to Parent Square, and right there, there is this complete this form to register for Parent Square. So if a parent did not receive an invitation to actually register, and note that our primary contacts are the ones that had pre-created accounts or pre-created registrations, and those are the parents that have been emailed. Now, if you're a secondary parent and you want to be added to our list, you absolutely can, as long as you're on the student's official contact records. They visit this page here to complete the form to register for Parent Square. And they fill out like the name, their phone number, their email address, and, you know, who their child is and how they're connected. It's just a simple form, and then the account gets created for additional parents, additional guardians, as long as, again, as long as they're on the student's contact forms. So I just wanted to get that little plug too, but we'll take care of the board for sure.
Is this information available in different languages for parents, those instructions here?
We have been submitting some things out, and I know Ms. Jackson is also communicating. We plan to announce that the new area that she put, like, hey, here's the website all about Parent Square, where we can have some videos in Spanish. There's training videos for parents, not that they need it, but if they wanted to, you know, learn how to fully engage and learn how to use the app. It is available in English and Spanish, and directions and screenshots of how to put in your notifications, how to change your languages. And it's kind of a dream that we've just started, and Ms. Jackson will be like updating our website and sending out a a news broadcast on, hey, visit this new page.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Bravo.
Very good, thank you. I just see we could actually enroll ourselves, but you probably will.
I'll take care of it.
I was just following it when you said that, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is ten point zero seven, Facilities Update, Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, Board. Hope you're all doing well. Wanted to take this opportunity, and I appreciate the chance to just give a Facilities Update at regarding the progress on the former Wenton Woods Intermediate School, Future Early Childhood Center. Work continues at a at a very good pace there. Feel good about the Phase One progress. Phase Two, thank you, Board, for approving the bid for Phase Two. We gave them the notice to proceed, so Phase Two is underway. They're developing the schedule of values, the Gantt chart, the schedule, all of those things are being assembled so that they can get the contractors onsite as soon as possible and begin some of these things. So this evening, and by the way, I wanted to mention that just statistically, projecting by billing, we're about eighty-five percent complete with Phase One as of August thirty-first. So looking three days from now. So we're getting close to Phase One nearing completion. So Board, what you should see before you hear is just some photos. Do something a little different this evening where you share some imagery, pictures worth a thousand words. And Lord knows I can put some words together, but a pic, picture's probably a little better and more efficient. So just wanted to highlight a few things. These are some, some of the work of Phase One, again, Phase One is a lot of the backbone infrastructure of the school. It's the HVAC, it's, you know, the boilers, it's making sure things like the gym actually has air conditioning. We have one instructional space in the district right now that does not have AC. Every other office and instructional learning space does except the gym at Early Childhood Center. Well, this will remedy that when this becomes the the existing, the future childhood center. So we've got a lot of great things going on. What you're seeing here is the storefront system, what they call a storefront. That's an example of it right there as well, where you have an aluminum framing system with steel supports, and it's anchored to the CMU block wall. And it just allows a lot of daylighting in. We know the value of daylighting, this building has tremendous amount of design daylighting. Even in some rooms, you can see the ceilings are slanted to harvest daylight. So the hallways here will have that. This is tempered glass, it's also UV-protected glass, so it cuts down on radiation entering the building. It's got a high insulated R-value, so it does a lot to keep the heat and cool in and the opposite out. So just a nice addition to the building, so you can see that, that was actually looking in on a courtyard. But that's positioned all over the building, in fact. This image just shows another major piece of the work in Phase One, and that's the hydronic piping. This, this piping runs all over the building into every single classroom and office, anywhere that there's a unit ventilator that basically provides the heat in the winter. This is carrying that heated liquid or heated water to those rooms. So there's probably miles of piping in that building now that has been all replaced, and it's, again, a fifty-year fix. We didn't wanna do a, you know, five, ten-year fix, we're looking for a more permanent comparable fix to what this building presents for its occupants and for the community and the schools. Those pipes all run to these, that's the boiler. And this boiler that you see in the foreground is a two thousand and two, that was done under a House Bill two sixty-four project at that point. The one sitting next to it is actually a fairly new boiler, actually really new boiler that was rescued from Primary South before demolition. The board even had approved at one point the replacement of that boiler, it died at a really inopportune time. And so we tried to scheme, let's get a boiler that can be moved. So it's called a Pon, a Pony Boiler, that's a Wild McLean brand boiler, it's a really good one. So we salvaged that and saved it, now it's installed at the intermediate school. And should give the district about twenty more years' worth of service. So it's just us, you know, trying to be as smart as we can with the resources that we've been given. And we'll, we'll conclude with what's going on on the roof. This is the roofing work there. That building has ten sections of roofing. There are almost two acres worth of roofing at that site, one point eight five acres, I believe, I did the math just right before the presentation. This is replacing two of those sections, one of the sections was replaced in twenty fifteen, so we've got a few more to go. And basically, the strategy our district has used, which our roof contractors advise us on, is nibble away at it. Make sure you get the worst ones first and then work your way around. So within the next five years, resources being cooperative, the district would endeavor to replace all the sections that of that roof so that it's a a twenty-year fix for that roof, twenty to twenty-five years. So that concludes the facilities update for this evening. Thoughts, comments, questions?
I know that you were concerned with some of the reports that came back about mold. And I'd like for you to talk about it a little bit of what the contractors did to alleviate that issue, if there was an issue.
Well, this building, I don't believe, Mr. Smith, we've had a report of, like a test, positive test result of mold in this building that I can recollect.
Okay.
If I misspeak, I'd be happy to correct myself, but we definitely have had that in the district over the years. Now, this, this site, again, like the building we're in now, right now, this has very advanced filtration on the air handlers. This building will have similar to that. It will have, I believe, MERV eleven is the goal, have MERV eleven level filtration. This building has thirteen, eight is a fairly industry standard for modern construction, MERV eight. And so that basically pulls a lot of the particulate out of the air, so it's really helpful for people with allergens. It does remove mold spores very easily.
The reason I wanted you to comment on that is we have to be very deliberate with the students and the staff that will be working in that building, that we did not give them something that we compromised on. We're putting a lot of time and a lot of energy into it with the right engineers. If you, it's, it's real interesting, if you don't build new, people think that something's not quite right, that when you remodel, that you left out some of the things. And I'm gonna tell you guys, the firm that that that's being used to remodel, they're not leaving out anything. They have been very, very diligent and committed. Their reports are very, very comprehensive, very thick. But I think they're very committed to it to make sure that once you button the building up, you can't go back in and correct, so.
Yeah, I, I think I speak with this construction site superintendent daily.
Yeah.
And he'll find something, and he'll say, you need to come take a look at this, you know? And so I, I'm fortunate because the site, work site is, you know, a hundred yards from my office. So it's easy to put eyes on it and collaborate and, you know, get those kind of fixes. And again, like to Mr. Smith's point, we want the staff, the students, the families, the community members that visit that site, that attend that site, to feel like there wasn't a compromise.
Absolutely.
That it, it was for them, it was very intentional to try to create the closest level of continuity to this building in the South Campus as we could.
And I think the monthly reports, especially when when the new buildings were coming up, and now you're talking about the renovation project, makes the community and the board feel more comfortable that this is being done with integrity. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danny. I'm sure our three hundred and fifty-seven families are looking forward to the new facility, and no delays with the switchgear? You know, I'm gonna ask that.
It's still on schedule, I ask every meeting, what I'd love to do.
Yes, every time.
Ms. Bryant, is get a picture of the switchgear?
Yes.
But we don't have it yet, so it's just tantalizing and teasing us, I guess. But it's coming, yeah, it's still on schedule, it's supposed to arrive in October, late September, early October.
We will be sitting at the curb waiting for the switchgear.
Like Christmas, waiting for that.
For that switchgear.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Danny.
Thank you, Mr. Danny. Next on our agenda, Superintendent Recommendation eleven point oh one, Stormwater Eastment Request from Hamilton County Engineers Office. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. Smith. Board, if I could, I'll just share again another image. You should have before you, under Superintendent's Recommendations, item eleven point oh one. you, uh, su- under Superintendent's recommendations, item eleven point oh one, stormwater easement request, from the Hamilton County Engineers Office, um, these are, I don't want to say they're routine, 'cause they're not, but these are fairly common, um, I'd say maybe one every other year, every three years, something like that, the most recent one that the Board had received was from Duke Energy here for the North Campus, um, to have an easement there, to install underground conduit to connect two different parts of the, the service grid. Um, this one's quite a bit different than that, but similar in terms of the request. So we received a request, Mr. Smith and I, from the Hamilton County Engineers Office, to do a pipe replacement, a stormwater, a stormpipe replacement, um, you can see that on page one of the attachment, um, and this is located at one zero zero two zero Corbett Road, which is, uh, the address of our bus garage facility, uh, the parcel property owned and operated by the school district there. So I just created this image, and, uh, Mr. Smith and I looked at this, and thought this might be a way to at least translate what they're trying to do, so, they are replacing stormpipe, uh, right in this vicinity of, of Corbett Road, and in Wynton Road, you can see the arrow there pointing to Wynton, um, way down, it's, it's very deep, I think it's about forty feet down, uh, below Wynton Road, there is a major stormwater conduit, uh, stormwater, um, uh, pipe, and that pipe is, they need to replace the pipe that connects, uh, their pump station, I don't know if you know there's a pump station right there, and, and that's actually, uh, uh, interestingly enough, another easement that the Board had granted some years ago, um, to have a pump station there on district property, so, it's very common for us to collaborate with other public entities, obviously. So, uh, that basically, I don't know if you've ever driven through there when it's raining heavily, you get a really good puddle right there, so you can see, there's a storm drain there, but it doesn't dray- drain correctly, and that's due to the piping, as well as some grading there, so, we'll see if they'll replace the grading, or address the grading, but they are gonna replace the pipe. To do so, they have to run it back, you see the arrow pointed that way, that, that is district property and goes back toward that pump station. So they are installing that, and they basically requested the Board's consideration, and, um, hopefully.
How much does it cost the Board, Mr. Denny?
Uh, it doesn't cost the Board anything, Mr. Smith, yeah.
Okay, alright.
And, it's called a per-
Alright, I saw Dr. Johnson say, when you saw forty, when you said, when you said forty feet down, Dr. Johnson was thinking, okay, here we go, alright.
Now, Mr. Smith, to your point, if we try to attach to it, that, we've actually explored that, and this is, this whole area is largely served by, uh, septic system, so that was over, over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to try to connect to the sewer system. Now, this is a stormwater system, so it's a little different, but when you get that deep, it's generally expensive, but that's on their dime, not the district's.
Yeah, one of the things that we have to do as a correction, uh, their document needs to be modified, because it, um, calls us, uh, Green Hills Board of Education, and so we have to make the changes on that.
Well, I'm not sure, we'd have to consult with maybe legal affairs for that, because, if you look at page five of that attachment, it actually shows the auditor's site, and it was deeded under what the district was called at that time.
Right.
Right.
So, when you look at our property deeds, actually, you'll see a variety of different names, 'cause we, we're Green Hills Exempt Village, then Green Hills Board of Education, and then Green Hills Forest Park, and then Wynton Woods, so there's several different names.
Yeah, I think the consultation will be appropriate, just to make sure we've got all the legal pieces together.
Understood, yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, that's the request from Hamilton County Engineers, is, uh, what they call a permanent easement, uh, costs the district no money, uh, it's not a sale, it's just, it's basically extended usage of the property, with the stormpipe.
For the public's view, that leads right out to the bus garage, right, close to it.
Yes, yeah, immediately, for, basically, I was standing in the driveway that enters the bus garage when I took this photo.
So when this project gets underway, what's the timeline, and how will it affect transportation?
Well, we can't let it affect transportation, to address the major part of your question, but I don't know the timeline yet.
Okay.
So once we get this back over to the Engineers Office, they're gonna do, we'll, we'll have to do coordination meetings.
Very good.
To ensure that, if they block to the right, then our buses can go to the left, or vice versa, 'cause obviously, we cannot interfere with, uh, getting kids to and from their school.
Now, if this easement, this new easement request makes us become more efficient, I'm excited.
We'll, we'll try anything, Mr. Smith, we'll take it, absolutely.
My first question was gonna be about the money, 'cause I didn't see any money here.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we question, please.
Oh, let's put a motion, okay, I'm sorry, it's really eager.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith and Mr. Denny, Board, a motion is in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the stormwater easement requests from Hamilton County Engineers Office as presented.
I'll second.
Is the motion in second, are there any questions or discussion?
Yes. Well, I, 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 you addressed it slightly, uh, but on many of the documents, there, there are multiple names, you know, the Green Hills Board of Education, you know, it, it's all these different names, so, um, and I was just curious, like, so who are they communicating with, us as Wynton Woods School Board of Education?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, because it, that's not clear to me, with reading this, because of the different names, like you say, exempted village, there's all these different names that are on here.
They do have the way across the address, though, I think, on.
They do have the address, yes, well, and they have eight twenty-five Lake, Lake Ridge Drive, you know, so they do have the right address, but I just, that was the other, um, question that I had.
Good point.
Yeah. So I don't know if that's something that you can address, or you could just look into it and bring us clarification to make, I mean, if they, the cost is on them, but, you know, if there's a name change, like, oh, the name has changed, you know, so, different response, like, you know, responsibility, so.
It's the name that was deeded. It, it, it's the name on the deed, and that's how it's been explained to me in the past, is whatever the name on the deed is, that's how they have to address it legally, but, but this Board, be, you know, when the district changed its name to Wynton Woods City Schools, nothing changed except the name of the district, so it's the, still the same Board that has authority and jurisdiction.
Okay.
Over the matters that occur within the district.
But we will still check with legal.
We sure can, Mr. Smith, yeah.
Alright, that was it, that's all my question.
So I got a quick question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So you said that there, that storm drain is one of the things that they want to address, correct?
I, I hope so, I know for sure what they're doing is addressing the pipe that it drains to, they're replacing the stormpipe.
Right, yeah.
Now, when I meet with them onsite, I'm gonna say, let's take a look at that storm, 'cause it doesn't appear to me to be graded correctly to channel enough water into the-
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what was gonna be my, my thing, to just, uh, see what their overall plan is for that, the finished product, and seeing if we can include that in that finished product.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, I, uh, when I used to work at Duke Energy, people used to ask stuff like that all the time, and they would normally get away with it, so.
Yeah.
I think we should ask to see what we can get away with.
Sounds, sounds good to me, yeah, that would definitely help us, 'cause it does get fairly, fairly deep there, actually, when it rains hard.
And I'm assuming they're gonna be jacking up the street already, so when they put it back in play, they should be able to make a permanent solution with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Denny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has been motioned in second, we've had our discussion, Mr. Seymour, can you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
The vote to approve district premises use rate as presented passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is eleven point oh three Personnel Schedule, Superintendent Smith.
We should be going to eleven point zero two District Premises Use Rates.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that, yes, eleven point zero two District Premises Use Rate, Superintendent Smith.
So, there was a opportunity, you know, our buildings are new, we want to keep them in great shape, and, uh, the use to the community and other people, we want to still keep our doors open and, and have that flexibility, but our prices have changed because our amenities are different, and, uh, so the recommendation is to, um, approve the new schedule.
Alright, Board, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the district premises use rates as presented.
I'll second that.
It is the motion in second, are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
The vote to approve district premises use rate as presented passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is eleven point oh three Personnel Schedule, Superintendent Smith.
Very good, uh, the recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules, uh, Ms. Wilson will be presenting the schedules.
Okay, before, before you, you have schedules A, B, C, D, and E, uh, and I respectfully ask that the Board approve them as presented. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second.
Is the motion in second, are there any questions for discussion?
There is a comment, um, the, I received a comment, even though she's not here tonight, Ms. Kuhn wanted to know, as it relates to, um, the call center, how it works, uh, the hours, and also, I believe, Board member Birdy wanted to have the same, similar question, so, Ms. Wilson, can you give them some overview of how the call center works and the hours that are, uh, assigned?
Yes, so the call center is basically, um, employees mostly from either the middle school, some from the ECC, although, we have other people from other buildings that do assist, um, because of our staggered start times, that are able, the people that start earlier and get off earlier are able to support dismissal, and the people that start later, um, are able to support, um, early morning arrival questions, and so what Ms. Hobbs and her team have been able to do is to create, like, a, essentially, an LaRosa's line, I think you've heard Superintendent Smith use that analogy, where, um, you can call one number, it rings to those people that have logged in and said that they are available on that day, and they're able to answer the phone, uh, take information, and then they can communicate with the Transportation Office, uh, to get answers for parents, um, quickly, instead of the two ladies, or two or three ladies at the, uh, Transportation Department, fielding calls from parents and drivers, and all the thi- you know, all the things that go into running a Transportation Office, um, all at the same time. Uh, Rhonda, is there anything else that I should add? Some of it's done through, like, a Google Chat, or a space, where they're doing, instead of, like, calling the Transportation Center, they might say, hey, where's bus, such and such, and, uh, people can, you know, the, people that are part on the line can respond in the chat.
Yeah, in, in order to create the efficiency, those, those people don't really have to leave their current site.
Correct.
So wherever they ended their day, they're working from there, and the calls are coming into the center.
Correct.
The other part of that, um, we get an AM and PM, and, um, Mr. Denny's been making these bar graphs lately, but we get an A and, and PM ranking of how many drivers are out, the drivers that are out dictate what's gonna happen in that call center. So when drivers are out, as a matter of fact, I think the public should, should understand that, uh, last week, we had eleven drivers out, and that really affects the center, because now, you're doubling kids up, and parents are saying, my kid should be on bus twenty-two, we're telling parents, your kid is gonna be on bus eighteen, but it will get you where you need to be. So they're, because parents are being very, very deliberate, I'm looking for this particular bus, it's the first week of school, so, and drivers were out all over the region, and I'm happy that we have the call center, that it can at least tell parents where their children will be, um, maybe not on the bus that they originally left on, but on an alternate bus.
Yeah, and one of the other nice features is we do have, uh, some bilingual staff that are supporting the call center as well, so that's a nice help.
Do, do we have the ability to track phone calls, I mean, to know how many phone calls are coming into that number, and how many were being dropped, or anything like that?
Um, so, I know at least on my phone, and I think Mr. Denny and Ms. Hobbs.
I get the, I get the concept.
And Mr. Smith, uh, we can all see it, and, uh, um.
What we probably should do for the Board and the public is create, uh, a data log, so they can see how many calls are coming through, to see what that support staff needs. So the list that you may see as it relates to the call center staff, all of those people are not used every time, it varies, because some of those people have other responsibilities, and they're saying, I can't make it, this person can, and it has to be a long list, but it, the list is not a group that's used every day, so it varies.
Yeah, these people aren't on, on, all at the same time.
No, sir.
No.
Yeah, no, sir, I figured that.
And, and they don't work every day.
Right.
That's important enough.
So how many usually work in a shift, like, four, five, six, or seven?
Probably like, what, seven or eight, yeah, and it kinda ebbs and flows, like, on Fridays, no one, but, or no, or just a few really dedicated people, but Fridays are rough, 'cause people, you know, wanna go home, um.
After a Bengals home game, it's interesting.
But, you know, the beginning.
Win or lose, it doesn't matter.
And as the buses come and go to the different buildings, you know, obviously, ECC is the latest buses that are on the road, so those staff tend to stay longer than the other staff.
Right, okay, yeah, that's kinda what I was thinking, okay.
Pretty good.
It's not like everybody blows the whistle, goes home at the same time, it's very.
And, and as far as the hours that are worked by these people, taking control of this, I mean, how, how do we, how do we keep track of that?
Oh, these people clock in and out.
They do, okay.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if it was like logging into the phone system, or something like that, or they're actually have to clock in and out.
Yes, sir, so we wanna make it very deliberate about what they do.
Right.
You know, we're communicating about a particular child.
Okay, and then, knowing some of the issues that we've had with transportation in the past, and having eleven bus drivers out, as far as complaints, do we track that, can we?
So before we have a solution, I don't think we've had our vote.
Oh.
For this personnel schedule, so, I appreciate the discussion and the passion in which we're discussing it, but if we can just get back on track real quick, and then we can have our discussion.
But we did the motion, right?
Did we do our motion?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything, God have mercy, it's Monday, I'm like, trying to stay on track.
I thought we did the motion, did we?
Okay, now we're just, our discussion, so we're good.
Okay.
So, but we're not, so just for the records, we are discussing Personnel Schedule D, and the call center employees, okay.
Yeah, and I, I would say that, um, our experience last year was that as transportation sort of leveled out the, the need for, uh, personnel, you know, you know, they started going home earlier, but like, at the beginning of the school year, when we first started it, um, you know, people were staying on longer, and more complaints, obviously, and then, you know, as things ironed out, uh, there's also some technology that, um, the schools purchased, and Mr. Homan, I'm glad you're here, uh, what is it called, the, um, Pick My Kid, which, um, last year helped tremendously, I think there was a little glitch at the start of the year with the Pick My Kid app, uh, is that back on track? It's back on track, but I think the first couple of days of school, it was a little bit rough, because the, the parents that had kind of come to rely on that, um, you know, wasn't working, uh, but, but, the call center has really helped a lot.
Okay.
And if you'd like a more comprehensive report, uh, we can probably put something together for you.
We will do that, because I think it's important for people to understand the fidelity of the work, the other part is, uh, we really don't encourage them to work every day, because some of the conversations from anxious parents can overwhelm you.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I apologize for spending so much time on that.
No, it's very important, we need to know.
It's a very timely topic.
And people, people, people need to know that the call center exists.
Right.
Uh, some other superintendents have asked me, how did we create it, why did we create it, and, uh, they are interested, because they're having the same issues with busing.
Sure, thank you.
Now, one other question, the Pick My Kid app, is that the, uh, tracking app, so they can tell where the bus is at a given time, what is that, explain to us what that is.
It's a way that you pick your kid up from school, from the South Campus.
Yeah.
So first, they're six graders.
Okay.
How does it work?
So you pull up, and you have to be on campus, there's a, a range of, uh, what So you pull up, and you have to be on campus, there's a, a range of, what do you call it, geo fence, I think. And you pull up, and you pull up, you announce your kid, so you're saying you're outside. And then your kid comes out and gets in the car.
Oh, okay, so they're waiting inside and then you send them out according to?
Yeah, until, until your parent is on campus, you don't.
Just staying out there.
So then, does, when the parent says that they're there, does that go to the school or to the kid, or who does it go to?
So you announce, and it turns gray, you've announced, and then when the teacher dismisses the kid from class, you get a dismissed on the phone. So if your kid is 10 or 15 or 20 minutes, get into the car, you have to ask the kid where he's been.
Okay.
How to do that. So your older kids kind of tend to mill around, so in, in that sense, it's good.
Okay, so it's basically that app is just to let the parent know when the child has been dismissed from school or, or the class has been dismissed, correct? Is that how it works?
If they're on campus.
Right.
The kid, the kid comes to you.
It's really to let them know that the child is available for you to pick up.
Okay.
They are ready.
Gotcha.
Meaning if there's any delays in it, then the child must be doing something else.
Gotcha, so it's not actually tracking a child, right? Okay.
No, not necessarily.
My other question is, I believe at our last meeting, you said that we had the right amount of drivers for, I guess, whatever. I can't remember exactly what you said. But when I look at Schedule A, I see that we have two drivers in a bus aid that resigned. So where are we at with capacity in terms of bus drivers to driver, uh, to, to routes?
So anytime we get a new driver that is hirable, we are hiring because ideally we would like to have three to, you know, at least three solid subs. So on the next month's schedule, you'll see a new driver that we hired today. So we're still hiring for, there are a couple of positions that we're always hiring for. Like I would never take the posting down, that's intervention specialist, bus drivers, bus aids, and parapros. Like that's just like kind of a revolving door for whatever reason for us. So, you know, when one quits, we try to have one in the, you know, on deck.
And, and to answer the question a little differently, we'd like to have three subs at all times. And so having that complete staff, I don't know if we've had that yet, Mr. Denny? Okay, all right.
Well, last month, we were at 29 and 20, 29 and 29, so it was like, ooh, we're getting there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because we kind of all applauded about it and I was like, well, I see two, three names on here, so ain't it 29 and 29 today?
Right, and then, you know, then people, you know, get sick or, you know, things happen or, you know. So it's, it's quite the challenge, but we're working on it.
Thank you, Board, for your discussion. Mr. Seymour, will you call?
Sure. Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Vote to pass Personnel Schedules A, B, C, D, and E passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, thank you very much. Is 11.04 revised board policy, Superintendent Smith, you have the floor?
Yes, Board, the recommendation is to approve the revised board policies as presented. And the first one is 7540.01, property technology. 7540.02, web accessibility content apps and services. 7540.03, student technology acceptable use and safety. 7540.04, staff technology acceptable use and safety. Policy 8300, continuity of organizational operations. Policy 8305, information security. Policy 8315, information management. And finally, policy 9700.01, advertising and commercial activities.
Thank you. Board, a motion is in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised board policies as presented.
I'll second that.
Is the motion in second, any questions or discussions?
Just one comment, I think, on the student and staff technology acceptable use. Very timely addition of artificial intelligence and natural language processing tools used by both staff and students, I think. I would imagine that'll be something that may evolve as this becomes more common, more used.
Actually, we've had a conversation with the Teaching and Learning Department, Mr. Bertie, about what's real and what's the kid. And you have a kid who's been struggling with some writing opportunities. And then all of a sudden, he's writing like it's the Gettysburg Address. We're like, we have to question that.
Right.
There has to be some integrity, but I can tell you, the PBL component of, of kids presenting helps create a better plan. Because it's hard to present what I don't know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then there's plagiarism software too, so can always use that.
Absolutely, turn it in. Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
The motion to approve the revised board policies passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 12.01 Legislative Report. Dr. Johnson, you have the floor.
All right, I have a few things that I need to discuss with you with regards to the legislative report. I did send this out to you all. House Bill 8, which talks about school curriculum. It's the enactment of the Parents' Bill of Rights, requires public schools to adopt a policy where parents are notified on student health and well-being and instructional materials, especially with sexually explicit content. And that passed the House in June of 21st, 2023. Also, House Bill 9, which was talking about teacher licensing. And we had the presentation of the Grow Your Own Teacher Program. That continues to be on, on the agenda and, you know, is, is flourishing. The other thing was, we talked a little bit about in the past, the education and workforce, where they're going to rename the Department of Education as the Department of Education and Workforce and also to create a position of the Director of Education and Workforce. And that continues since May of 2023. They're still talking about that, it hasn't passed yet, but it's something that is still on the docket. And House Bill 38, which is the mental health phase, which will allow districts to permit students to take up to three mental health days away from school. The issue that some people have with that is the makeup, how will they make up the schoolwork?
Which creates more mental.
Which creates more mental health. But that is continued, it's still on the docket. Also, the automated external defibrillators, having them in public schools. That was referred to the Senate back in June because they want them to be in the schools. They're not sure who's going to be paying for them. So that's kind of the problem.
Or training people, right?
Or training people to use them. And the House Bill 33 money was patted around, but that's not a done deal for how that's being paid for. So don't say that I said it's going to be paid that way. It's, the, the, the point is that it still wants it to be in public schools and non-charter schools and all recreation facilities and to develop a model for the emergency action plan. But who's paying for them? Who's paying for the training? All of that is still out. And so it was referred to the Senate. Also, we talked a little bit about, and as school is coming back into session and you have the coaches, House Bill 82, where it requires athletic coaches to complete mental health training and to revise their renewal if they've already went through training to, to go back and, and refi, uh, be retrained. And that was to take effect December the 29th, 2023. But it's continued to change after that date, and it was originally referred back in February. So that is kind of a continuation. Our Directors of Teaching and Learning talked to us a little bit about the third grade reading guarantee and how, you know, the intervention is going to take place. And what I would like to say is that our district already had established what we were calling somewhat individual education plans across the board for all of our students. So we were a little bit ahead of the curve on that. But we had to follow what the state mandate was regarding the third grade reading guarantee. But that passed the House back in June of 20, June the 21st, 2023. Again, something that's dealing with sports, House Bill 139, to increase the penalties for assault on victims acting as a sports official. So if someone assaults a referee or, you know, comes down and creates a, you know, a public display of, you know, negativity, then there is going to be a stiff penalty for them. And that is going through the criminal justice system in June of 2023.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
In, in your notes, because I've looked for it and I have not been able to see it in that same legislative guideline. I never saw where, when this person would be prosecuted for doing something to an official, that they would be restricted from all activities.
It doesn't, it doesn't address that. You know, you're absolutely right, it doesn't address that. It just talks about the retaliation of the victim's actions and, and against the sports official, but it doesn't say they'll be banned.
No.
No, that might be a policy that maybe is for a district, you know, to come up with, maybe it'd be a district policy. But this law does not, House Bill 139 does not address that. And that is a great point because if you come to a game and create, you know, a negative experience for everybody, it, you know.
I would think the officials would want that.
Yeah, it was like, you're out. So the other thing is, there's been changes regarding the school bus and making the laws stricter for people who go around school buses when the lights are flashing or when the, the sign comes out. So that was referred to the House back in April and it still continues. I don't, I don't know what's taking so long to hit the stamp and say, yes, we're gonna, you know. But anyway, it's, it's been continued. The other thing that was referred to the House back in June was the bathroom facilities. That still becomes an issue regarding single sex bathrooms, access to primary and secondary schools and also for higher education, but that has become, that's still continuing. Let's see, the last two that I have that I thought would, should be recognized would be the Department of Education. Oh, I did that one to rename, I already talked about that one. The last one was to, about the religious freedom, to enact religious expression days. They're calling it RED, R-E-D, Religious Expression Days. To acquire each kindergartner through 12th grade public school to adopt a policy providing students, teachers, and staff with religious accommodations. That is being continued because how that is addressed or what that looks like has not been well defined. And the last one was student records. And I, I, I agree with this one strongly because when someone transfers into a school, but Senate Bill 66, but it's being continued, it hasn't been, it's not made law yet that would require public and private schools to transmit and transfer students' records within five school days. So sometimes students are getting held up in what they can do and what accommodations they might need because the records haven't been transferred.
And it's usually because they owe fees.
Owe money, that's exactly the reason why, exactly. So that's the legislative report, and I did send it to everyone, so it's in your emails.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, Senate report. The next item on the agenda is 12.02, Graded Career Technical Center Report. Mr. Bertie, you have the floor?
And I distributed an email earlier this morning to everyone with the CEO Report, Board Highlights, Legislative Reports, Diversity and Unit Committee Report. What I would typically do at this point is highlight the students that were in the Spotlight on Students Report. But similar to what we had tonight here in our meeting, there was not a Spotlight on Students Report yet. So I will look forward to that in September.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that report, Mr. Bertie. Next item on the agenda is 1301, Delegate and Alternative Delegate to the Annual OSBA Conference.
Would anyone like to volunteer to be the delegate and alternate delegate to the Ohio School Boards Capitol Conference?
Volunteer.
I've done it before, it's a great time.
Yeah, I, I do believe that I have to, to be.
Well, you, you were the alternate last year, weren't you?
You were the alternate last year.
I was the alternate. I think I would like to nominate Paula, even though she's not here.
And then you'd be the alternate.
She will be the delegate, yeah.
She'll be the delegate.
Paula, if you're. I'm sure Paula would have nominated herself too.
Paula, if you're watching, remember who nominated you. That's all I got to say. Wow, remember who nominated.
Are you going to nominate yourself as the alternate there?
I didn't say all that. I guess so.
I would happily volunteer, but I, I think I'll be returning from a trip from out of the country. And I don't, and I know with travel logistics, sometimes you don't make it back. So I don't want to overcommit myself and represent the district badly.
You already told me you weren't going.
Yeah, I told you I wasn't going, yeah.
Convenient, convenient.
Travels.
Thank you.
Ms. Bryant, are you the alternate then?
I suppose so, geez.
I'll second that.
I'll gladly serve.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
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 Oh, because that was going to be a strong second for me.
And you know Paula will be there probably.
Yes.
It's a very good possibility Paula will be there.
We just have to send it for him, send that for him.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments from members of the Board of Education, the superintendent?
Yes, Madam President, Vice President. So I'm going to read something. I made an announcement to the Board in 2021 that I had, I did not have the interest of renewing a contract. And so I am, but Dr. Johnson reminded me, this was not the Board. You were not here, Brandon was not here, and Paula was not here. So the purpose of this letter is to formally announce my retirement from position as Superintendent of Wintonwood City Schools effective July 31st, 2024. As I reflect on my service since becoming to the, coming to the district in 2013, I'm grateful for the support of the Board staff, our three communities, and most importantly, our incredible students and their parents throughout the years. I'm proud of how through project-based learning, we have developed a culture of collaboration, trust, respect, and responsibility. Our students are graduating as confident, ambitious, and productive students with agency and a growth mindset. My time at Wintonwoods has been filled with student achievement, assemblies, concerts, athletic events, student, parent, staff, community committee meetings, levy and bond campaigns, and construction projects. Of course, we cannot forget the ultimate challenge to our learning community, COVID-19. However, through every adversity, we have remained unwaveringly, unwaveringly resilient and overcome each obstacle. As I transition, I'm looking forward to seeing the next chapter for Wintonwood City Schools unfold. I have the utmost confidence it will be successful as long as we always remember our mission, always doing what is best for our children. I plan to stay committed to the work until I retire on July 31st.
Thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes, I wanted to say happy first week of school. Today was my first day back to school and I always get really excited. I just get so giddy. I mean, it's like I can't sleep the night before, it's like the excitement that rings through me. And honestly, when that excitement goes, I'm going to retire myself. But I do, I get really giddy and excited when I know a new school year is about to come. So I just wanted to welcome back all of our veteran staff, teachers, and administrators into all of our new first timers. We want to welcome you and say welcome to Wintonwood City School District and, and for joining the district. And as a college professor, I realize how the, the, it really takes a lot from kindergarten all the way to high school to lay the right foundation and to build. And I get to see them on the college level. So as we start this school year, I just want to say thank you to all of the people who pour into our kids every day. And thank you to the groups that came and donated an enormous amount of school supplies. It was the Green Hills Right Pat Credit Union, it was the Divine Nine Fraternity and Sorority Groups. It was the Forest Park Senior Steppers. And it's because of community leaders like that, that we know that you care about the school district and we know that you want as much for them to be a success as we do. So we appreciate you. And again, thank you and happy new year, school year, happy new school year. I, I'm, I'm always so excited, I can't help it. I've been doing this for so long. Yeah. It's my new universe, no, I mean, every year, I'm the same way. Butterflies, can't sleep at night, it's like a, it's like Christmas for me, I'm waiting for it to happen. So I'm, I'm happy that it's here and I'm just as happy at the end of the school year. So I don't know, it's, it's the process, I think. But anyway, we appreciate you and we just want you to know that we do. I, I do, and I'm sure my board colleagues echo the same sentiment, so that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Bertie?
Actually, I wrote down everything that Dr. Johnson said, so I, really, in the essence of time, I don't think there's, so yeah, welcome back. Thank you to everybody who contributed the school supplies, that was great and really appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, like Dr. Johnson said, welcome back, everybody. It was exciting, first day at the Warrior Rallies at both the buildings, that was fun. Welcome back, Mr. Seymour, my friend, good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, yeah. Thank you to all the teachers and administrators and everybody to kick the, the school year off right. You know, we're, we're starting out strong, so I'm excited about that. Yeah, good Warriors.
Great, I won't.
Great, I won't belabor the part, but, the, the meeting, but I would say ditto, 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 ditto. And Mr. Smith, thank you so much for reading your announcement. I'll have more words later on that announcement, but I do wanna say thank you for all that you've done for the district and all that you continue to do. Thank you for all the, um, new employees that have chosen Wintonwood City School District as your place of employment. Hopefully you will have a long tenure here. Again, I echo Brandon's sentiments about the back-to-school rallies, it was really, really fun. Such a difference being at the high school and middle school, like the middle schoolers were like, yeah, yeah. And then the elementary school, so excited and they didn't know where they were going, but it was just, uh, interesting, very interesting to see the littles, as Mr. Super, as Mr. Smith calls them. Just really exciting time to be in the district. Great job at the back-to-school, um, actually wasn't, I guess, not the back-to-school, but the, I'm blinding to rank, the football tailgating on Friday.
Open house.
The open house, so we're calling it. Great football game, um, so it was great, it's just, it's wonderful to serve in this district. And again, thank you guys, all of you who are watching, feel free to come, join. Um, if you have comments about the districts or things that we can do differently, we ask you to please show up at our meetings. And again, as Mr. Smith, Brandon Smith said before, please don't stop us in the streets to tell us. We love for you to come and be a part of our meetings. Again, thank you for those who serve and, um, support our district. Oh, I wanted also shout out to Wright-Patt Credit Union, I've been a member of that credit union since nineteen ninety-four, so it was really nice to see.
That was really good.
Yes.
Absolutely. They got some of my money too, I appreciate that, absolutely.
That they were su- serving the community and again, we've got phenomenal community support. We'd like to continue on with that, so thank you all.
Here is a need.
The next item on the agenda is fourteen, um, point oh one, Board, oh, sorry, fifteen, well, fifteen point oh one. There is a, um, need for executive session, so I will need a motion.
Madam Vice President, I'd like to make a motion to consider, to go into executive session to consider the dismissal or discipline of a public employee.
I'll second.
Second. It has been motioned and seconded, we will now go into executive session. Um, I wanna thank in advance Waycross Community Media for videotaping tonight's meeting and we will, um, not come back in for public session after, thank you.